Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to an order. Eileen, please read the opening statement.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 19th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Call the roll, please.
Former Mayor Gatto.
Present.
Mr. Husser.
Here.
Chief Kudrick.
Here.
Mr. Russo has been excused. Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Boyle has been excused. Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro has been excused. Mayor Berger.
Present.
And Chairman Nash.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then for a moment of silence after that.
Chief, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting of June 21st, 2018. The eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June 21st, 2018.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Eileen?
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move down to correspondence, please.
Correspondence, I have a letter from Mr. Alfieri. He's the attorney for 41 Randolph. And I spoke to him yesterday because I had in my book that Mr. Tannenhouse was going to be excused today.
And that was true, but I was able to readjust my schedule.
Thank you.
I apologize at the last moment.
So at that time, we only had four eligible voters for his application. So he said that the applicant does not want to move forward with the hearing with only four eligible voters. Therefore, it's requested that the public hearing be adjourned to September 6th without further notice. He also granted the board an extension of time in which to act on the application through September 30th. And he was hoping that by extending it or moving the case to September 6th that some additional board members could view some videos and be eligible to vote.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We will carry this matter to September 6th, 2018, at 7:00 here in the main meeting room. No further notice will be provided.
Okay, thank you. So if anyone is in the audience tonight waiting to hear the application for case number SP 102741 Randolph LLC, the applicant has asked to be carried to September 6th so that this application will not be heard tonight. It will be heard on September 6th, and there will be no additional notice.
Thank you. I also have a letter from Mr. Pape. He is the attorney for Lanes Pond Developers LLC, which is also on tonight's agenda. And he asked that this one also be moved. His applicant's professional team had a conflict with tonight, so we ask that that one be carried to September 6th as well with no further notice. And he granted the board an extension of time through the end of September as well.
Okay. How does the agenda look for September 6th?
I believe right now that would be the third case on there, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, my apologies. This matter will also be carried to September 6th at 7:00 here in the main meeting room. No further notice will be provided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So again, the audience, case number SD 2984, Lanes Pond Developers LLC. The applicant has asked to be carried, and it's being carried to the board's September 6th meeting. So that application will not be heard tonight. There will be no additional notice sent out. So if you're interested in that application, we'll see you back on September 6th.
That's all I have.
Okay. One minor thing, not minor thing, I stand corrected, one major thing that I'd like to discuss is one of our board members, former Mayor Gatto, has submitted his resignation at the end of, effective at the end of tonight's meeting. I wish you luck, Mr. Gatto. Personally, I owe my start of the Planning Board to you because Mayor Gatto had just been, former Mayor Gatto had just been elected, and I had put in a resume for joining the Planning Board. And I was fortunate enough that he was favorable to my appointment. So I thank you, and I wish you luck, and I'm sure the board wishes you luck in whatever your future endeavors are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
And I would be honored if you decide to come back to the board.
Maybe someday.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Resolutions. Case number SP 960R, United, excuse me, United Advertising Corporation, is a resolution granting preliminary and final site plan and conditional use. Eligible voters, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman, and Mr. Tannenhouse. Do I have a motion?
I move to memorialize case number SP 960R.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next one is case number SP 1015A, Landmark Plaza Management LLC. It's a revised resolution granting amended preliminary and final site plan with ancillary variance relief, design waivers, and woodland management plan approval. Eligible voters, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, and Mr. Schneider. Gentlemen?
I make a motion to memorialize case number SP 1015A Alpha.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next one is ordinance O-18-8, land use, Chapter 188, mother/daughter units. It's a resolution deeming proposed ordinance O-18-8 substantially consistent with the township master plan. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, Mayor Berger, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to memorialize the resolution for ordinance O-18-8.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. We're almost done with these. Last one is a resolution for ordinance O-18-10, land use, Chapter 188, conditional uses by adding new section 18K, like in King, entitled placement of small cell equipment and wireless poles in the public right-of-way. It's a resolution deeming proposed ordinance O-18-10 substantially consistent with the township master plan. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, Mayor Berger, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to memorialize ordinance 018-10.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, applications before the board. We have case number SP-1045CR, Howell Township Board of Education. This is a capital review. It's an application of Howell Township Board of Education as applicant and owner seeking a capital review for the construction of a renewable energy solar field near the Adelphia Memorial Elementary School access drive from Delmore Road and Skidmore Road within a six-foot-high fenced enclosure on premises known as Block 152, Lot 71, Adelphia, Fomingale Road.
Okay. Very good. Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Bill McManus. I'm a land surveyor and land planner licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal in the firm of Duffy, Dulce, McManus &amp; Resch, and I supervise the preparation of the plan that we're about to talk about tonight. As you know, this is a capital review program application. What we're proposing to do is a solar array on the school facility dealt by Memorial School. We see up on the screen and on the board that I have before me is part of the application that was submitted, simply just an overview, aerial overview of the land, which is approximately 77 acres. The two schools are on the front of the property or the northerly side of the property closest to the road. Behind the schools are typical parking, recreation facilities, and drainage facilities. And what the applicant, the Board of Education, is proposing to do is to construct a solar array on the southwesterly portion of the entire property. The area will be fenced in with a six-foot-high chain-link fence. The solar array consists of about 32 panels, which will generate approximately 1.1 megawatts. I have representatives from Hesp Corporation who are the solar developers here with me tonight. If there's any technical questions, they'll certainly be happy to answer those for us. And I know that Ms. Newman has some questions in her report. We'll be happy to answer those questions as well. In and of itself, that's the application that's before you. Very simple. We're trying to establish a renewable energy, help defray the cost of electricity to the school system, and this apparently was the best and highest opportunity for the school to take advantage of. So that's the application before you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just maybe attempt to move this along. The board will remember, we actually recently had another capital review at the high school for the switch over of the field. So the applicant is before you just for recommendations. If I could maybe just go through a couple of questions and then we could see if the board has any questions. How much power do you anticipate being generated?
Approximately 1.1 megawatts.
And is this strictly for the school's usage?
It is.
And the ground cover between the panel area?
We're not proposing to change the ground cover. Currently, there's a little bit of high vegetation. It will be mowed down just before the panels will be put up and then maintained by the operators.
So there'll be no grading either?
No grading necessary.
Okay. Did the Board of Education want to see a decommissioning plan, or is there any plans in place for a decommissioning plan?
The operators will certainly be happy to talk with the board about that. The life of these kinds of arrays are 15 to 20 years, and we suspect that technology will probably outgrow this particular facility. We'll make those decisions as we move forward.
And just in looking at the orientation, it looks like if a car needed to come in to access the array, it could park on that internal access drive there. But is there any need to have parking within the field area?
There's no need. There's really nothing to maintain on these particular kinds of facilities. Once the arrays are constructed and the conduit is put to the inverters and eventually to the meter, it's essentially maintenance-free.
And just by way of vegetation, because it does join a residential district, can you talk about the trees that are in that area? Will the residents be able to see the field?
The field is a very low solar array. The leading edge or the lowest edge of the solar panels are only about two feet off the ground. The highest part of the panels are about five feet off the ground. We're putting a six-foot-high chain-link fence, so that in and of itself means the panels will be below the fence. The nearest panels are 100 feet away from the property line to the neighborhood on the westerly side. There's a heavy stand of mature pine trees, double row of pines, in some places even thicker than that, that buffer the neighbors to the west for the solar array. So I think there's virtually no visual impact to the neighborhood.
And there is no tree removal either? This is in a clear portion of the site?
That's correct.
Okay. The only other question I have is whether or not you're subject to any other outside agency approvals like BPU or PJM.
Yeah, those kinds of applications have been made and granted already to the Hesp Corporation. From a planning perspective, we've submitted an application to the county. That application is pending. And we've also submitted an application to the Soil District, and that application is pending as well. We expect no difficulties with either of those two agencies.
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, with that, I don't have anything further. I would note that, as was indicated, this really isn't going to disturb the ground. There's no grading proposed. They physically get put in. There's no change to the ground covers. There would be no drainage impacts associated with it. The power would directly serve the school. It wouldn't be tying necessarily back into the grid. So based upon that and the information, I'm satisfied with the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Would have questions?
Could you just point to your, could you point to your picture and show me where the inverters will be located? Do you invert? I'm going to ask one of the Hesp people to come up and explain that's a little bit more technical.
Can I just hold on? Counselor, do they need to be sworn, perchance?
I would think so. I would think so. I mean, they're offering testimony.
Do you swear to tell the truth, not about the truth, before this board, so help God?
I do.
Thanks.
Can you state your name?
I am.
For the record, please.
I am Mosbacher, C-H-A-I-M.
Can you use the mic, please?
I am Mosbacher, C-H-A-I-M, M-O-S-B-A-C-H-E-R.
And affiliated with?
Hesp Solar. Developer is building solar projects for the Board of Education.
So the inverters are not the old version, which were standalone inverters called central inverters. We now use inverters that are mounted, they're very, very small, and they're mounted right to the back of the rows of the panels. Micro inverters?
They're not micro inverters. They're solid-state inverters. They look like an electrical panel board.
Okay. So the reason for my, I'll just get to the reason for my question.
Sure.
Reason for my question is, is it was close to some residents, and I was going to make a recommendation that if you're using the type of inverters that have the fans and the sound, that sounds like that high-pitched VFD sound.
We've gotten away from those. It's been two years since.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that the residents weren't going to be impacted by those, by those noises, so.
Those inverters typically create 80 to 90 dB at full load, and then their fans kick in, and then it's kind of noisy. It sounds like a car running at full speed. The current inverters that we use are below 50 dB at 10 feet away.
Got it.
So they're.
Tell them what a dB is.
Decibels. It's probably the equivalent of an inverter-type central air conditioner condenser, the stand-up small little inverter.
Okay, so there's still some noise, but it's located on the back of.
Literally a hum. It's to the point where our technicians don't even know if it's operating. They want to see if an inverter's operating. You can't hear it.
Okay.
They walk over and just look at the screen to know. And that's at the sunniest, coldest day of the year. But it's, they're fairly quiet. In the array, you can't hear them.
And what kind of signage and/or other devices will be placed around the facility to let the children know to basically stay out?
Okay, so the fence is an anti-climb inch-and-a-quarter hole, anti-climb fence.
Okay.
Height is usually governed by the area, and usually it's six feet and below. We've had requests by fire department to create a seven-foot fence, but either way, they're anti-climb. And then every 25 feet around the fence is a red warning sign, just warning people not to enter.
So did you provide testimony for a six-foot fence, I thought I heard?
Six-foot.
It sounds like you're getting seven.
I've, we've had, we've had fire departments or fire chief request seven, and that's the tallest I've ever had a request for.
Okay.
But six-foot is the proposed fence.
Okay. The application's been viewed by the fire department, I think favorably. No comment about the fence. Okay.
What is the panel orientation? Is it to the south?
It is perfectly south and 25-degree tilt.
Okay. And those are fixed panels, correct?
Correct.
All right. And how do we get from the solar field to the school?
So there are two trenches, so each school gets its own interconnect. So there's a trench that is essentially a single trench, and then it breaks off to Memorial and Adelphia School.
Okay, that's not shown on these plans, is it?
I don't believe the trench is shown.
Not shown on the site plan. It's just shown on the construction drawing.
And the area of the trench would be obviously restored?
Sure. Restore compacted every six inches and then brought back.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see that trench going all the way up to the schools.
They're not, they don't show a trench on these drawings all the way up to the school. They only show honestly the connection out to the access road. They don't show that on these plans. I don't know that we necessarily need to see that. I don't know if that has any bearings, as long as the trench is going to be properly restored.
And, okay.
On the building permit construction drawings, after this process, they then go onto that drawing.
And what's the voltage as it leaves the field?
480 volt, alternating current, 480 volt.
480 volt. And you're going to put it in rigid metal conduit?
No, goes in Schedule 80 PVC underground.
Okay.
They got away from metal conduit due to corrosion, all kinds of other issues. So yeah, Schedule 80, anything that rises up above the ground, just to avoid crushing from lawnmower, lawn care, so they go to steel conduit. The elbow turns into steel, and then above ground is steel, but otherwise everything below ground is PVC.
Is the underground conduit going to be traversing any of the areas where buses may be maneuvering around the facility?
I, yeah, we're, our interconnects on both schools are in the back of the schools. I don't know, right, it looks like there's some kind of an access road. I don't know if it's.
Think that's an emergency access road, though.
The buses are out in front, conduit's going to be in the back. Our normal processes will.
Schedule 80 is enough. Adequate need to be concrete encased, that's all, I'll make the recommendation. And we're recommending things here, so.
Yes.
So, I mean, you have.
I can answer that question. You wouldn't put a concrete encasing around a Schedule 80 pipe. You use concrete encasement if you have inadequate separation of crossings between utilities. So this depth will be at the depth required per permit, and a Schedule 80 is, that's a pretty strong pipe.
Again, I'll leave it up to them to make sure to, to provide engineering. I'll just providing some advice, and if they feel that the Schedule 80 is strong enough to handle the heavy buses and truck traffic, that's fine.
And rightfully so. It is a requirement that if you go above the 30-inch required depth, then you do have to encase it in concrete. So below six inches to 30 inches, if you're anywhere within that range, you do have to encase it in concrete. If you're below, I believe it's 24 to the top of the conduit, you're fine. And we're usually 36 to 30 underneath that road.
I made my recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
What's the deed notice area within the project area?
Department of Environmental Protection, there was some, when the schools were built, there was some contaminated soils. The DEP required them to be located, specific area, that's where they're located. That area's not allowed to be touched, so that's why the solar array is notched around so as not to disturb that area.
So that's just an institutional control? There's no cap or anything?
Correct, exactly. It's six foot below the current.
Do you know what the contamination is?
Pesticides of some sort, not sure.
Where did you indicate the inverters are going to be located within the array?
Mounted on the back of the rows, so your panel height, the bottom, starts at 24 inches and it goes up to about five-plus feet to get it mounted.
No, I get that, but where?
They're sprinkled throughout the array. A panel holds in the range of six to eight circuits. So you reach your circuit limit, you install another inverter. It's just the most efficient way of installing inverters. The inefficient way of doing it that requested sometimes is that there's a group of inverters located on a concrete pad away from the array, and then you bring all your direct current or DC conductors from the solar panels, bring them over there. They tend to be kind of ugly, more commercialized, and you have a central location for 12 or 15 inverters. These inverters, people usually don't even know they're there. They're just mounted on the high point behind the row as soon as the circuit runs out from the previous inverter, the next inverter gets mounted, and so on.
Okay, so I guess my question really is, you said that the noise is 50 decibels 10 feet away?
Yep.
But yet, there would be nothing located within 100 feet of a property, a residential property?
I believe right the edge of this, the end of the solar panel, I'm not sure, gates, right, the fence is an additional 10 feet, so I don't know the exact length of it.
Because 100 feet from.
That's to the property line, and then, of course, the houses are set back from that.
Okay.
If you want to look up these inverters, they're called string inverters, is what their industry name is.
So, so how far away from the westerly fence would be the first inverter?
Five feet.
So how is that 100 feet away from a property?
Well, when you say the fence.
Because the fence is located 95 feet from the property line. If you look at sheet, well, you know what, Mr. Gatto, if you turn around, I actually have it on the screen. So this is the property line.
Okay.
So that's the 95 feet, and then they dimension in another 15 feet to the panel.
Got it. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Sorry, I just had it up.
No, I actually was looking for the number, and when I zoomed in, it wasn't very clear. So that's, thank you. Okay. And where is the, oh, okay, I see the access gate. Okay. I'm good.
Mayor Berger? Any questions?
No.
Chief? Satisfied.
Seaman?
What's that?
Brian?
I think it's, I actually would just like to comment, I think it's fantastic that the school is doing, doing this.
Do we need to have some type of motion, Counselor? What would be, what, what would be the motion?
Just motion to draft the resolution to basically summarize what was stated here on the record today.
So it would be a motion just like any other motion we make for approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion with all the recommendations that we presented? Put it on the record.
Okay. You making a motion, Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yep, with all the recommendations as we.
Can you just turn your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion for all the recommendations that we provided for this capital review, for case number SP-1045CR.
What were the recommendations?
The.
Pretty much that we keep, I guess, to the commitments that we made, or the statements that we made.
Right.
In addition, they represented they would review with the board a decommissioning plan.
Right. But it didn't include the encasement?
I'm making that recommendation, but it's a recommendation.
Right, but I'm not going to, you said make a, make a motion with those recommendations. I'm not going to, I'm not going to approve that recommendation.
Okay. Put a second, put a second motion up.
Well, wait, there's a motion on. We have to see if we don't get a second then. Is there a second on Mr. Tannenhouse's motion? Seeing none, I will ask for a new motion. Chief Feef?
So I'll make a recommendation to approve as presented, case number SP-1045CR, Howl Township Board of Education, a capital review of solar.
With a presentation of the decommissioning.
Right, right, with the.
I'll second that motion. Call him, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
No.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
So there, I won.
That's okay. The benefit to Howell still, still existed.
Okay. Next case is case number SD-2978, Edward and Loris McNamy. It's a preliminary, excuse me, preliminary major subdivision, application of Edward and Loris McMe, as applicant and owner seeking preliminary major subdivision approval to subdivide the existing 17.3-acre tract into eight single-family residential lots utilizing the lot averaging subdivision development option available within an ARE2-zone district on premises known as Block 153, lots 25 through 30, 334 West Farms Road. This application was partially heard on June 7th, 2018, when it was carried to June 21st, 2018, with no further notice. On June 21st, 2018, this application was carried to July 19th with no further notice. Councillor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lawrence Lachell, appearing for Edward and Loris McNamy, the applicants in the application. Again, we are here on a, what we believe, based on the engineering review letters and the planning review letters, is a conforming subdivision. We asked for the adjournment from the last meeting because there were some concerns or questions regarding the yield plan, which we have since resolved by submitting a revised yield plan to address those concerns. The planner has confirmed that those concerns that he had from the prior reading have been addressed. There are some, obviously, additional comments that we are prepared to talk about, which is in the planner's most recent review letter. I am going to ask to admit my proposed expert witness here, Mr. Walter J. Hopkins, who is a licensed engineer and licensed planner, and the preparer, drafter of the documents that have been submitted to this application.
Excuse me, councillor?
Yes.
Have you and your client been sworn in previously?
I'm not sure, but I just, I took a lot of hits that I had in college on playing football, so I just assumed we would.
Same here.
Go through it then, yeah.
Would you raise your hand right here?
Yes, I sure.
Do you swear to testify the whole truth and not but the truth before this board today, so help you God?
I do.
Can you?
Can we get a mic that works?
Might need, might need battery.
Okay.
All right, showtime.
All right, just to continue summarizing the lot.
I think it was in the processes.
You swear? You swear to tell the truth and not but the truth before this board today, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please spell and say your last name.
Walter Hopkins, H-O-P-K-I-N.
Mr. Hopkins, were you qualified at the last meeting?
I, I don't recall. It was a little bit of a blur, a little confusing, so if, it's up to the chair's discretion. I have testified before this board previously and would be more than happy to offer my credentials again.
Yes, please, why don't you go ahead and put it on the record?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. I'm a certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey as well. I have a bachelor of science from Drexler University in civil engineering, and I have testified before this board and many others in the area.
And you're New Jersey planners and professional engineers licensed, all current, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll accept Mr. Hopkins as a expert in both planning and civil engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hopkins, you have an opportunity to strike that. Are you familiar with the project that the McNamys have before this board?
Yes, Sam.
Please talk about how you came familiar with this project.
Sure, it's, it's a 17.4-acre site. What I'm going to be referring to, and maybe we want to clarify this, is a color-rendered version of the plan that was submitted to the board. I don't know if you want to mark that. I also have smaller copies if the board would want those, make it a little bit easier to see.
You want to mark it?
Just, we'll mark it as A11. I believe I have an exhibit list that was handed to me by Ms. Rubano.
Is that dated 6/5/18, or is it more current?
That's correct.
That's already marked as A8.
That is A8. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Arlene.
Mr. Hopkins, can you take and move the easel much closer to the podium?
Of course.
And before we get into the application, and I know that we had this issue last time, and I believe that it's been resolved, but I would just like to go through the, the conforming plan.
The yield plan.
The yield plan, that's correct.
Yes, just to summarize for, for everyone else, the lot averaging provision of the ARE2-zone, there's, it's available in all of the ARE zones, but this particular zone being the ARE2-zone is an alternative to a subdivision. The idea behind it, which is outlined in the, or addressed by the planner in his letter, is, is to preserve some of the natural resources in the character of the rural area that the ARE2-zone is. Rather than having the sprawling subdivision, which the ARE2-zone requires a minimum of a two-acre lot, which would effectively have a road with a cul-de-sac in there and take up the entire tract, this lot averaging subdivision allows the required bulk conditions to be reduced significantly in order to have the remainder of that property preserved and prevent it from further subdivision, which is proposed here. And so, I don't know if we could get that up on the, the screen, which is the most recent yield plan. That's our, our sheet 12, it's the last page in our set. On the, on the set, that would be.
That's A10.
A10, correct, the most recent revised set submitted. So, as you may hear, I'm just summarizing. I'll let Mr. Hopkins talk about it further, but one of the concerns, obviously, was the, the back corner, Ottawa would call that Lot 4, in the upper left-hand corner. On the last draft, there was concerns as to the calculations of whether it met the lot width requirement. There was also a concern that in the design standards, that the lot lines were not radial from the street lines, that being straight. So we've since went back to the drawing board, I say we, Mr. Hopkins, and revised that, and that's what now is depicted before this board, which has fully conforming with radial lot lines, so the lot lines are straight rather than any curvatures. Is that your understanding as well, Mr. Hopkins? Yes, and I believe in Mr. Van De Coy's review, there was a question, I think he thought that this complied, and he just wanted clarification that not all of the lots were dimensioned as far as lot and width. And I can testify tonight that all of them do meet the lot width requirements of a minimum of 200 feet, and any approval, we would add those dimensions to the plan for his review.
Okay. Pete, you agree?
I, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then, the yield plan is valid, and we can move on from that?
It, it is. We went through it. It's, it's, it's valid, it's compliant, and I'm satisfied.
And I do appreciate the efforts of Mr. Van De Coy, as well as everyone else at CM and also Ms. Rubano, and obviously the board, with allowing the, the opportunity to go ahead and address those. It's just one of those things, it hadn't come up on the, this is an old application, it originally submitted in 2017, but because it is a major subdivision, there was a lot of things that needed to be done, environmental impact statement, so on and so forth, but we were able to, to address that, and now we're here before this board, which is, the yield plan, of course, sets the, the ceiling. If you're going to use the lot averaging, you're get whatever you get on the yield plan.
Okay, fine.
Is that your understanding as well, mister?
Yes, it is. So just to continue to situate the board, it's a 17.4-acre site, it has approximately 1,000 feet of frontage along West Farms Road, and it is located between Casino Drive and Georgia Tavern. It's directly across from Richard Rowne, and it's known as Block 135, and it's actually lots 25 through 30, and again, it's in, located in your ARE2-zone. The surrounding uses are similar and compatible. To the north of the property is residential. On the other side of the street, to the south, is a church and a private school. To the east, looks like it's a landscape nursery, and to the west is residential as well. It's currently a wooded vacant site. There are wetlands located to the rear west of the property. Those wetlands have been identified by our office, or actually, it was another consultant's office, and confirmed by NJDEP, so it does have a valid letter of interpretation in effect, along with the buffers. I'm happy to report that we are not encroaching on the buffers, asking for any encroachment or anything else, and that was really what kind of helped drive the way that we situated these homes on the property.
Now, you've, can you talk to the, to the required bulk conditions that are set forth with respect to the lot averaging?
Sure. So, we had a lot of interaction with your professionals, and I, and I think that was beneficial to both us in developing the plan and to the township and getting a good product. The, the yield plan was developed, and again, it shows eight lots, and that plan shows a cul-de-sac, so it shows a paved road that would extend off of the West Farms Road. And rather than burden the township, increase the impervious area, what's proposed are eight lots fronting along West Farms Road. And with the, with the lot averaging, we go from two acres to a, to a minimum of one acre. So of the eight lots, six of them are very close to one acre, one acre, 1.01 acres, and we have two, the two lots on either end are large lots with, with 6.2 and 4.7 acres. Those lots will be deed restricted from further subdivision. And, and along with the, the averaging criteria, the bulk dimensions are also reduced. We comply with all of those area and bulk requirements in the cluster provision.
Now, is it your opinion that the, that this helps minimize the impact of development in areas as far as from, from further development?
Yes. We are actually, and there was a, I believe it was in Mr. Van De Coy's letter, I think there was a typo in our, in our plans. We are preserving over 81% of this property will be undisturbed as a result of this development. I believe somewhere in our plans, it says 50%, and that was a prior, that was a prior approval or submission, but with the current application before you tonight, it's over 81% will remain undisturbed.
Now, with respect to the preservation of rural character, you believe that this current subdivision application advances that?
Yes, it does. And, and if you look at the character of the neighborhood, it really does fit in. You do see other homes that are located throughout West Farms Road. They have direct access to West Farms Road. We have set back the homes a little bit more than what's required. Your ordinance requires 50 feet with the cluster provision. We're at approximately 100 feet, and we're trying to preserve as much vegetation in the front as possible. We've met with your tree expert, and we're trying to strike a balance between maintaining the vegetation and, and keeping what is healthy. There is some unhealthy vegetation out there that we flagged, and I think that they would agree it would be removed.
Now, there's been some concern, not some, so to say, concern, but there was an issue raised with respect to 50-foot buffer surrounding the property. Can you talk to that, please?
Yes. Actually, one of our recent, when we resubmitted with the lot yield plan, there was a minor tweak that helped eliminate the potential of a variance, and that was your ordinance, which requires a 50-foot perimeter buffer. We, we had that all around the, the sides and the rear, we were slightly encroaching it on, on the sides, so we revised that. We are no longer encroaching in your perimeter buffer along the two sides. It was also suggested with your planner's most recent letter that a buffer be instituted along the frontage of West Farms Road. I think there's some confusion on our part as to whether that's required, but rather than discuss it, the applicant has agreed to actually include a permanent, a 50-foot perimeter buffer along the frontage as well.
So from, from referencing Mr. Van De Coy's letter of July 17, 2018, paragraph 5A talks about section 188-63.1, about the 50-foot perimeter buffer. The applicant here is offering to consent to the request of Mr. Van De Coy and actually provide that 50-foot buffer along the, along West Farms Road across the property as well. Is that correct?
Yes. The only exclusion, obviously, would be that the driveways would have to intersect that easement in order to provide access.
Okay. And the plans, obviously, would be revised to address that approvals.
Yes.
Okay, of course.
What's the, what's the starting point for that 50-foot buffer? Is it in the middle of the street?
So with this, it would be the right-of-way, and actually, what's happened on this is we are providing the township with additional right-of-way.
So what is, prior to this application, what is the current right-of-way that exists along West Farms Road with respect to this property?
Currently, it is, looks like about 33 feet along the frontage. We're going to dedicate another 16 and a half.
And that would get it to 50 feet?
It would actually get it to a 66-foot total right-of-way width, which is in accordance with your, with, in accordance with your master plan. So I think I kind of gave you a convoluted answer to the question. The 50 feet would start.
Looks like in the center of.
It starts at the property line.
Right, but approximately 20 feet from the existing road.
But that's, that's, that takes into account the proposed dedication.
That is correct. So the dedication goes in, that reestablishes the front yard, and then it's measured off of there. It's measured off the property line.
Effectively, it would be 50-foot buffer plus the right-of-way that's being offered. That's correct.
So, talking about like the 81% preservation.
Yes.
Obviously, the lot that's labeled 25.01 would have a lot of strict restrictions based on wetlands that are already there.
Correct.
The larger piece at 2508, is that going to be deed restricted to the owner that buys that property? Will they not have access to change all the, that, that rear acreage they have?
That's correct. Well, just.
I don't know that that's exactly correct.
That's.
The excess acreage is deed restricted against future subdivisions. That's the deed restriction that's in place for that. So that excess area can be utilized by the homeowner who purchases that property, but that homeowner could not come in and attempt to re-subdivide because it's an, because it's a larger lot.
Right, which is kind of what I was thinking the answer would be, but I mean, obviously, those, what, excessive five acres could be cleared for the owner's use.
Subject to, obviously, there's ordinance as though restricting to what.
Subject to our tree ordinance.
Correct. So the, the underlying thought we had with respect to putting the flag lots rather than just sending eight lots straight back with land is, it'd be not, the eight probably would not utilize it, or six of those eight would not utilize if they were going back. So if we, by creating the flag lots, perhaps the two flag lots would have the ability, if someone did horses, or someone would had for a private, you know, sort of farming or. did his horses, or someone would have for a private, you know, sort of farming or quasi-farming or something along those lines, that would be available for them.
I'm sorry, a little tired, it's been a long week. I'm confused. So, what's the purpose of the clustering, then? I thought the purpose of the clustering was to allow more vegetation to be undisturbed, but if there's no deed restriction on these lots, then these homeowners can come back and disturb the land?
Well, so here's, here's the purpose of it. I mean, in theory, you eliminate a lot of infrastructure and clearing as a result of the subdivision if they went under the conforming lot yield plan. So, the application preserves vegetation in theory, but it's not deed restricted against a homeowner utilizing or clearing the property subject to ordinances. This option of clustering, because we have several different options in our ordinance, is a lot averaging. So, the whole point is it is some of the lots range between one acres to three acres, and there's a certain percentage between them.
Okay.
So, that, you know, we also have, we have lot averaging...
Cluster.
We have other ones, though, we have like, yeah, the clustering options, lot averaging. Open lands, we have an open lands cluster provision, we have this one, which is lot averaging, so we have several different options in our ordinance.
So, it sounds, so it looks, so if I could just summarize this, it looks like the benefit to Howell, to the public, is the fact that we have less road we have to worry about maintaining in the future. Other than that...
There's less public improvement, so there's less roads that would need to be maintained, pulling in utility infrastructure, these are just individual connections off of the road.
But these are septic and well, so there's no...
Well, the, yeah, but there's, there is electric, the electric would have to be underground. There's also...
But that's not our problem, isn't it? That's PSE and, I mean, JCPenney's, right?
Correct. Some of the, yeah, but some of the other aspects...
I'm just trying to figure out the weighing of the positive criteria versus the negative criteria, and it sounds like a positive is less road. Is there any other...
Certainly, less road, and it preserves the rural character of the area.
I think if we can, though, they're not subject to demonstrating a positive and a negative criteria. Underneath the ordinance, if they meet the qualifications, they can present to the board a clustering subdivision. If you don't think that clustering it this way, and you'd rather see a conventional layout, well, then you have the right to do that, but it's, they're not obligated to give you, I think, positive and negative criteria.
We're not asking for variance.
I think he was meant, benefits and detriments.
Let me see if I can say this a different way. So, my understanding is with the clustering ordinance, if we feel, as the board, that the other, a yield plan would be a better plan, we have that right to say, we think this would be better, and that's the application we'd like to see move forward?
Yes, we think that the conventional layout would be better, for whatever reason it may be, yes.
And that's where I'm going to come in and make my recommendation to do so.
But even, even if the applicant conforms with the ordinance that allows it to be done?
Yes, under our ordinance, the planning board can opt for conventional, yes.
So, then, then there is a need to talk about the benefit to the township of Howell versus something else, okay? Okay, I'm good, I'm good. You continue with the application and jump in and out.
I'm not sure I understand that.
So, what Brian is saying is, by allowing the applicant to put all the homes on the, on West Farms Road, and not in a conventional subdivision, the applicant doesn't have to put in that lengthy road, which is dollars that the builder has to pay.
And the township has to maintain.
And the township has to maintain it. Ultimately, we have to maintain it. And what Brian is trying to say is, is trying to say, well, usually, what happens is, the developer will say, if you give me this option where I can minimize the amount of road I have to build, I will give the township, I will deed restrict or something, so that we have open space in perpetuity. What we're hearing from the applicant right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we'll go, he's proposing for us to allow him to put the homes on West Farms Road, but there's no dedication of open space, so homeowners who buy these houses can come in and, you know, not clear-cut, but they can take down trees and utilize the entire area. So, what is the township, what Mr. Towns is saying, what's the gain for the township, other than we have to maintain a little less road?
So, then, as a board, yes, so as a board, we're going to have to decide if we like this plan, and I'll rather let the application, applicant finish, and we can have those kind of discussions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I just make a point on that? On the lot yield with the cul-de-sac, the homeowners can still take down all the trees that, you know, you're worrying about with this plan, too. This plan, though, keeps a contiguous property, you know, so rather than chop up the properties and have people clear them differently, this is a lot more land that's all interconnected, you know, so regarding like for wildlife and just overall forest health, it's better if you don't chop it up, and you could keep it as a whole unit. The lot that's on the left, they can't clear really any, much of that, because they have wetlands to pass through, so their lot is not, you know, you can't really, you can't touch that lot, it's really just the other one.
So, to follow up on all the options, then, was there an option that was available that could have allowed those two open, large lots to be deed restricted as open space to the township?
Yes, they could have used the open lands option, which the purpose of that is to promote the retention of contiguous wooded tracts and large farm tracts.
And they've chosen not to do that?
That is correct. They chose the lot averaging.
May, we, I could address that. We actually, that was our first submission, and then our first submission, as we came, Mr. Hopkins, do you recall submitting an application under the open space, over the open...
I don't recall, I do recall submitting, I don't recall specifics about it.
What had happened was the, the minimum requirement was 50% dedication for open space. We had a meeting at CME, and apparently, the application would have come under, slightly under, the 50%, which would have required variance relief. So, rather than going through the extreme expense of putting something up in an application that needed variance relief, we went to the application that would not require variance relief. What I could tell you is the applicant's prepared to offer the back portion of the land as a conservation easement, if that's what the board sees fit, in order to balance the equities of this project. It's just, the decision was made to go forward this way, rather than the prior one, because the prior one was like 49. some odd percent, I defer to the engineer as to what that requirement was, I don't have her review letter in front of me, but effectively, the township of Howell could get the same amount of conservation space if it need be, if not more. Is that correct, Mr. Hopkins?
It is, and if the chairman doesn't mind, I can touch on a few of the benefits that I see, and I think the board members are keen to this. You do have a road, with the road comes maintenance of the road, snow plowing, and the pavement, you're going to have to replace the pavement every 25 years. It would also be required to be sidewalk and curb, or possibly curb, but definitely sidewalk. Storm sewers would also be involved with that, that's something else that the town would have to maintain and eventually repair or replace.
And a basin is a detention basin as well?
Potentially a detention basin. And the open space, what this does is, especially with a, with a conservation easement, is it provides the township with that open area, but doesn't burden the township with the liability or the maintenance of that open space area, because it falls on private land. So, you do get that area preserved, it just doesn't happen to be a liability to the township.
And I could also talk about, the open space proposal that we had submitted originally that was reviewed, did have a cul-de-sac, it was just a shorter road, because the lots could come down. So, that's really what caused the preservation to come under.
So, I've heard a couple of things. I've heard that it could be deeded back to the town for open space, and I've also heard that it could be listed as a conservation easement. Those aren't the same things, right?
They're the same, they're effectively the same thing.
Well, if it's an easement, it's owned by the property owner and not the town, right? So, so the items that you just mentioned about liability and maintenance of a large tract of open woods wouldn't exist if it was deeded as a conservation easement on the deeds of those two lots?
Correct. If I misspoke, I apologize. When I spoke to conservation restrictions, it was deeding an easement, it's effectuated by deed, right? So, the, the property owner would still own the tract of land on the flag lots, it just would have, there would be, prior to those conveyances on the subdivisions, deeds, there would be a deed to the township of Howell for a conservation agent, which depicts the meets and bounds of the area to be preserved.
So, would that process restrict those two individual homeowners from clear-cutting the lot?
Correct. The applicant's prepared to offer that if the board sees fit. It was not required under the lot averaging, but again, I understand, based on the board's concerns, we came prepared to offer that as well.
I understand.
And just two other quick little statistics for the board's consideration, a cul-de-sac would require, and again, there can be clearing afterwards, but starting with the application, approximately 2.3 acres of additional clearing, and that would also require an approximately 16,000 square feet of additional pavement or impervious area that we're saving with this application.
So, Chief, would you like to bring your concern in?
I will. So, the last, last time that this was heard, and Deputy Mayor Nacaster is not here tonight, but he made a comment about the traffic concerns along West Farms Road, particularly in that area between Georgia Tavern and Casino Drive. So, after the meeting, I went knowing of the speed problems that we do have there, in fact, it's a targeted enforcement area, that stretch of highway, of roadway right there on West Farms Road, particularly between Georgia Tavern and Casino Drive, in the past two years, two of my patrol cars have been totaled as a result of people speeding, and one of them was on the distracted driving detail when he was hit. So, obviously, when I looked at this, after the last meeting, I took that route home. I lived in that area for about 20 years, I grew up in this area for about 44 years, so I know the character and the nature of the roadway. There is a hill crest, if you're heading east on Georgia Tavern, on West Farms Road, when you pass the intersection of Georgia Tavern Road, there's a hill crest right there, and that hill crest, if there's a vehicle heading east, stopped to make a left into either one of those first two driveways on your, on lot 25.01 and 25.02. If there is a vehicle making a left, if it's heading east, waiting to make a left into those driveways, there is absolutely going to be a sightline problem with an approaching vehicle from behind. So, my question, was there any type of study done, or are you willing to do any type of study with any type of traffic engineering, to take a look at that sightline distance to see if that would in fact have an impact on any left-turning vehicles into those, into those driveways?
We have not done that study yet. I don't know if this has been brought up yet before, but this board did approve five homes fronting on this road years ago. So, it was the understanding that because that approval was already there, adding three additional homes would not significantly impact the amount of traffic.
But where were those five homes located, if they're further down? So, I have no issue with those, with those homes that are approaching Richard Road and further east, it's those first two homes. And I saw your sign up there about the subdivision, I saw it, I was right there, and in fact, when I came in tonight, I drove past there once again to make sure I was accurate on what I was about to say tonight, because I knew this was going to come up. So, if you're going to ask me if, whether those, of those two plans, I would prefer to see a cul-de-sac in there, it's less entrances onto West Farms Road, the less chances of people stopping and making turns and getting hit from behind, and like I said, that section of roadway right there has been notorious for speeding complaints for many, many years. I could basically post a patrol officer there 24/7 and still continue to get speeders, no matter what, it's just a problematic area in town.
So, thank you, Chief. I could speak to the prior application for the five lots, because I was involved in it. What I could say is, they did not differ much, obviously, they were just wider in width, they were 200 feet across rather than 100 feet, as it was required here, and ultimately, but the same configuration, same layout, just less lots. I was not aware of, obviously, the concerns the chief has until now, and one of the reasons we weren't is, we had submitted and got submission waivers, one of which included the traffic study. However, my objective is to do a good job for my client and try to get this...
Well, and wait, I'm going to correct you, because at any point, if the board feels entitled to a submission, that doesn't grant the waiver indefinitely.
Thank you. No, I didn't indicate that. In any event, what I was indicating is, it's my job to try to do a good job for my client, and obviously, we are prepared to go ahead and do that. If, I would, however, like to at least conclude the portions of the testimony with regard to any other concerns that the board may have, that way, there may be additional issues that we could tweak and concern as well. So, from what I'm hearing, at least with respect to the preservation of the open space, not just a deed restriction, would be one indication, and obviously, the traffic study to address the, obviously, the...
Sightline distance.
Sightline distance in regards to the...
The hill crest.
The hill crest.
Yes.
And if I could, just to clarify, I'm in a unique position to be able to ask you this, I do believe it is posted school zone in that area, correct?
There's somewhat of a day camp or a day school in that area, yes. So, once you pass Georgia Tavern Road, there is a sign stating that there's a school zone right in that area.
Okay, I just want to get it straight for our analysis. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, when you do your analysis, I would not count on that reduced speed limit. I would, I would go by the posted speed limit. It's 45 through there, right, Chief?
It's 40 in that particular stretch, yeah.
So, we're asking them to do additional analysis to see if the plan that they're proposing tonight is the preferred plan?
I think we're going to let them finish their app, their testimony, and then we'll probably list a bunch of...
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna let the applicant finish, and then maybe pull the board as to what we want the applicant to come back with.
That's correct. That way, we're, I don't want to waste the board's time with any additional ones, we would like to find out what it is, that the concerns are, address those, hopefully, and then come back, hopefully, with something that addresses all those.
Counselor, did you have a picture up here with the cul-de-sac that you previously submitted?
The, the only one that we had was the, I do not have the, as far as the open lands subdivision? No, we do not have that.
So, I understand about allowing him to continue, but maybe I got this wrong, but I'm sensing that certain members of the board would prefer the conventional layout with the cul-de-sac as opposed to what they're presenting. Am I getting that wrong, or...
Well, I, I think...
Because if, if not, then they're going to be presenting testimony for something that maybe we don't even want.
Let me ask...
If I got that wrong, then please correct me, but...
I'm getting the sense, especially from Chief, if they can prove to us that there is no traffic situation because of the sightline, that with the, with the conservation easement, at least it's my impression that the board would be more inclined to have the homes on West Farms Road and forego the extra infrastructure, as long as they can prove that there's not a traffic sight, sight distance issue.
There is a, that's correct. So, what's depicted now, just for reference, to address the, one of the questions the board had, that is what our open space concept drawing consisted of with the subdivision. The, the road was a bit smaller, it did have a cul-de-sac, and the lots were able to be brought in significantly under the, under that open space, but we were short on the amount you had, under the ordinance, you need to be able to dedicate at least 50% of the property as open space for a conservation easement, and we were coming just under that, which would have required a variance.
And that conservation easement would have only existed at the upper left-hand portion where the buffers are, right?
No, would have surrounded, basically wrapped the entire property. So, where you see behind the lots, it would literally go around the whole circumference of the property, except for, obviously, there's a huge, big detention base, or retention basin on the top left-hand corner there, which would obviously...
So, so maybe I'm missing something, but the purpose of the ARE2 zone excluding these other options that a developer has, was to allow developable parcels to maintain some character of ruralness with the surrounding neighborhoods. With all due respect, I don't see that at all, with nine homes being built in a row on West Farms Road. I don't, I don't see how that's rural character, I don't get it, I don't see it. That plan clearly does to me, and all of these other items that we're talking about with, you know, land that wouldn't be used and wouldn't be disturbed, whether we call that a conservation easement, or whatever term we wanted to ask the developer to do, I don't see it looking much different than the amount of green that's going to be in that plan. So, to me, it just seems that, to me, that that... to me, that would be a much better plan in respect of the fact that they would have needed a variance if they were off by a couple decimal points of percentage of developable land. That was my point of asking that question now instead of letting them just go ahead and continue with that. If I got it wrong and I'm the only one that's in favor of that, then by all means. But I, just aesthetically, I just don't know how that plan looks anything like anything that's around there. That's nine homes in a row. You don't have that on West Farms Road anywhere near that area.
I would disagree with that. West Farms Road is consistently homes fronting along the road from Georgia Tavern.
Nine in a row with hundred-foot widths?
It would be eight, not nine. It's eight. And this is totally out of character for the neighborhood. You do not see this.
A cul-de-sac.
Yes.
Okay. Again, I respectfully disagree.
You know, I don't know how you can come back here and tell us anything different than the chief has enunciated. I mean, if, is nobody here that has, in the whole township that has more experience and has actually gone and said, "There's a problem." So how can you come back here in a week or two weeks and tell me that this is not a problem? It's a problem. And any kind of study you're going to make is not going to change what the chief enunciated. And also, four driveways right in a row with all that traffic, and you could have a plan with one driveway going into the cul-de-sac. I really don't care that there's another fifty feet for the township to mow, or I mean to clear the snow. It really doesn't bother me.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Just if I understood the chief's concerns, the chief's concern was asking for a traffic study in order to see if there was a way to alleviate the line of sight issue. There may not very well be a way to do that, and we may very well have to come back here and say, "Look, we have to, you know, scrap it and go somewhere else." But if I understood the chief correctly, if there was a way to alleviate those concerns, obviously, the board would want to hear that. That may, may not, but it may address those concerns. That's what we're prepared to do. Again, I don't, we don't have to bother putting more of the application on if the board wants to see that resolved first, but I would like to hear other comments if there are from any other board members before we go doing that, because again, this is an old application. It's been a, my client's not a developer but for the fact of this application. And so I am trying to be conscious of cost for them as well. So I do want to get everybody's concerns if they may.
If I could just kind of chime in on the traffic, and this is where I probably would have gotten to before, but I don't know that it's necessarily a traffic. I think what the concern is, is the number of openings and whether or not that that hump poses a sight distance issue. And if it does, one point of access would then be preferred. So I don't know, you know, understanding that you would do that analysis, but I think that analysis may yield you to, the project is safer with one point of access because of the location of those driveways with the hill. So when we say traffic study, I don't think what we're looking for is the physical counts and stuff like that that we're used to, but we're actually looking to see with the speed and the hump, is it in fact restrictive specifically with those driveway locations? Because that, I think, would pose the safety issue.
Right.
And support one point of access.
Right. So obviously, the less, the less opportunity for a vehicle to stop and make a turn, obviously, the less chances of a rear-end collision. But I also can supply, supply you with any type of traffic data. I actually have a traffic camera and a speed monitoring device right there at the intersection. All that information is downloadable. So all you have to do is request it through my office, and I will print out a copy for you and it will tell you the eighty-five percent, you know, eighty-fifth percentile of the vehicles traveling at that speed at that, during a particular time. I can provide you with all that data. So all you're going to do is just email me, and I'll, and I'll supply that to you.
Thank you.
Now, it's not going to be favorable because we know that there's a speeding issue in that, in that. And even though there's a posted speed limit for a school in that area of twenty-five, it's only when children are present. And I don't even know when children are present at that. I don't even know if that school, if that daycare is still even in existence. So that's another thing that may have to be researched.
Sure. Thank you. I will get, at least I could get the data, get it to my client, and.
Yeah, that's fine.
Point them into that direction.
But also, if I could just be fair to the applicant, their concern, as was our concern, was that this layout required a variance. And I think now the board has seen several iterations of a plan. One, that would be conforming but may have, obviously have safety issues. A conventional layout, which we saw, which doesn't have the same green areas being preserved as this plan that you now see up there. The concern was with them coming in and requesting a variance. So I just think maybe if the board could give the applicant that level of.
Relief.
Well, or at least direction, because, you know, for them to design, go back to design, I think they're going to want to be comfortable that the board, having seen the options this evening, would be more in favor of granting the relief given the circumstances.
And like I said, I have no problem doing so because it's a safety issue on my part.
So what I like to do now, so we don't spend this whole night, is I like to go around, all right, there seems to be three options that we are considering as Ms. Newman just enunciated. I like to, each member maybe give the applicant a flavor of what they're thinking, so we can get a consensus, so that the applicant then can go back and either do his traffic study if he needs to do it, knowing where the ingress and egress is, or any of the other options that we're looking at. So, Mr. Kuzo, you want to?
I agree with Mr. Gatto and Chief. I think the cul-de-sac fits that area better. I guess, Chief, my question for you is, as that map is behind you, is that, that left-hand turn any concern?
As, right across from Richard Road?
Correct.
No, I would, I would prefer to see it right at that intersection.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was going to ask him.
So I'm in favor of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so the option that's up on.
Correct.
All right. Mr. Tannenhaus?
I, yeah, my initial thought was the cul-de-sac before, before I started my questioning. So I'll stick with my original gut.
Okay.
Well, this, you know, just in trying to have some true fairness, so with the layout, we have the standard layout. There's eight properties. With the layout that was presented before, there was also eight, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, if we actually went to the other cul-de-sac design, would you actually still be able to get eight units?
Yes, sir.
Or would you lose one in the back corner?
No, there would still be eight. It would just, the, because we have, because of the clustering down, we would have additional space to be able to offer to put in the detention basin.
Because with the origin, with the, well, I guess the updated cul-de-sac design, it looks like the properties on the northwest are really, you know, impinged on, by the wetland boundary versus everything being pretty clear of it here. So with that said, I would, I would favor the cul-de-sac that's on the screen.
Mr. Schneider? I said it already.
All right.
Chief?
You know how I feel with that. And also, if you want, in your research, if you drop a pin on Google Maps at 394 West Farms Road, you can go to street level view, and you'll see exactly my concern. You could see right at the intersection, you could see the hill crest, and you could follow the Google, you know, the street view right up to the hill crest, and you'll understand my concern. And you'll see your property located on the left-hand side just after the hill crest.
If you don't mind me asking, just for clarity, if we were to resubmit with a cul-de-sac, would you want that same sightline analysis done?
No, there's no need to because I know the area of West Farms and Richard, Richard Road is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At that point, we would ask that the board carry it. Obviously, if we do go forward with the other one, we anticipate there being a variance, I would renotice, but assuming we, one way or the other, I probably would renotice to be safe.
Would, okay.
Well, also, before we conclude, there was, in the note, the latest notes that were issued, there was an issue with the Environmental Commission that they still have not received their soil reports request from January. I would say that, for me, the environmental is very important. I would not want to see the application back until the Environmental Committee has had an opportunity to provide a specific recommendation. I don't see any reason to carry a meeting forward without Environmental Commission because we would never be able to vote anyways.
I mean, I'll just piggyback on that, and possibly these answers could be here tonight. We've submitted, the environmental, I said on the Environmental Commission, we've submitted requests, and this is all based upon your environmental impact statement, that the entire area was cleared according to historic aerial photographs. Fast forward to 1980, a portion of the property was cleared. So we took a look at that, and it looks like it was used for some type of agricultural purposes. And my understanding, and I could be wrong, is that we have an ordinance in this town that requires sampling for historic agricultural operations. That hasn't been done. It looks like adjacent properties were used for agricultural purposes, the fear of runoff of pesticides, residual pesticides in soil, especially the fact that these are going to be residential units. So we would request, the Environmental Commission has requested that some type of soil sampling program be done.
We're familiar with that, and I hope we didn't offend the board or the Environmental Commission. It was always our intention to comply with that, but we were just going to ask that it be deferred as a condition of approval.
Correct.
But I think we're hearing a little something different.
I can say that you won't get my vote with a deferred condition of approval.
So, so we will have the reports submitted ahead of time so that the Environmental Commission can have it reviewed so that when we come back at the next meeting, we have closure on that issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The concept that's up on the board monitor right now will require possibly a minor variance for the overall, the conservation easement, if we, if we put that in, correct?
That was our understanding. We did not go back to try to revise that plan at that point. We may, perhaps, we may not, but if it does.
So I wanted to, I wanted to give you guidance on this issue. And again, I would like to go around to the board, understanding that this concept right here will get the con, get a conservation dedication but may require a slight minor variance. So, Mr. Kuzo, would you be amenable to granting that?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes, but it would have to be really proven that it wasn't achievable.
Okay. Mr. Seaman?
I think it's a good balance.
Mr. Schneider? Yes.
Yes.
May I? Mr. Scott?
They won't be here.
Well, if you were, what would you say?
You got the majority.
He got the, he got.
I appreciate your concerns, and obviously, that's one of the.
Because what we had is a lot of, under the, this is a rural lane, which under the RSIS standards, we could go forty-foot, but the preferences, as we understood that from fire, is they don't, they don't like that. They want the fifty-foot right-of-way because it's a preference, and obviously, we want Howell to accept the road dedication. So that's where we lost some of the provisions, and also, obviously, giving up the right-of-way up front off of West Farms Road was where we basically lost land that we could have preserved. So Howell gets it one way or the other. It's just, it wasn't, we couldn't offer it in the form of a conservation easement.
Okay. And then, just one last thing. We do have a couple of members from the, from the public. This is, we've, we've gone from a little bit of a conventional meeting. I would like to just ask if we could get any comments or input that they may have as to which particular plan. So I'm asking anyone in the public right now if you want to have input on this, because the applicant will be coming back with a revised plan based upon what's up on the screen right now and the suggestions from the board. If anyone would like to stand up and come to the mic and give the applicant some input as to preferences, what you would like to see, you're more than welcome to right now. Okay. Seeing none? I'll close that. So, Counselor, I guess at this point, you've put on all the testimony that you're going to put on tonight, correct?
That's correct.
All right. You want to be carried?
Yes, please, Mr. Tannenhaus.
How long?
We have. He's going to tell me tomorrow, so.
So I, the next meeting would be fine. I, we've done the work actually on the.
My only concern is you'll have the soils information.
And reviewed by the.
What's, is the next meeting September?
No.
Or we're.
Our next meeting's August 2nd, and then we have another meeting September 6th, but we've already carried two applications, and there's something else.
Will you be able to meet the Environmental Commission before the meeting?
I need to ask my ditch digger in chief.
We would subcontract. That's what we can't, that's what.
I would respectfully ask that it would be put on for the August 2nd one. If we can't make it, then obviously, I understand we may end up getting bumped out even further beyond the September date of this.
All right. Do we have anything on for August 2nd?
Yes, we have. There's two cases at least, if not three.
So, so right now, Counselor, we're here at July 19th, all right?
Okay.
Even if you got the information within the next couple of days, it still doesn't give our boards and all the reviewers an ample opportunity to look for this material over.
So the September date.
I would ask that you consider the September date.
That's fine.
That would be September 20th, and I'd need an extension of time as well.
We consent on the record, but I'll submit a formal letter and confirm that we consent to the extension.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So we're going to carry this matter to September 20th at seven o'clock here in the main meeting room, and no prior notices are required.
Counselor, are you going to renotice?
If the new application requires a variance, then yes, I would renotice. In fairness, even though there hasn't been any objections from the public, it's my standard practice. I end up renoticing many times anyway, just for the, you know, just err on the side of caution.
Okay. So anyone in the audience who's interested, case number SD 2978, Edward and Loris McMe will be carried to the board's September 20th meeting, and the applicant will renotice for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay. With that, our master plan committee chairman isn't present tonight, so I presume there's no report.
No report. We, I don't know if we have a budget yet.
Yeah, I was going to ask Mayor, is there any, I understand circulation plan was the next one that was being considered.
I don't know for sure. I wasn't in the meeting this week, so I don't know what was actually discussed.
Okay.
An executive.
All right. So, any reason to go into executive session? None? All right. With that, I'll entitate a vote to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.